Twenty-four, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded both video and audio and will be posted on the district website. The first item on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes from the June 11th, 2024 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So move.
There's a motion in a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Abstain. Yes. Motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening, thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight, I know it's a lengthy agenda, so we'll try and keep things moving along for you, but please interrupt if you have any questions. As requested, Member Mallett, we did put a chart in the minutes now in my notes for you that list all outstanding positions that we have in the district, so you'll see them coming up. I'd like to announce a few new hires. At Park Ave., we have Rachel Jewell, who is a Speech and Language Assistant Pathologist. At Webster Middle School, we have David Bove, who is an ELL teacher. We have Nicole Guzinski, who is a Speech and Language Pathologist at the Webster Middle School and Butler High School. And then we have Lisa Boisvert, who is a Special Ed Team Chair for grades K through two at Park Ave. Elementary. In addition to our new hires, we did have a few resignations. The first one is Lauren Maher. She was an ABA at Park Ave. Michaela Schenover, a paraprofessional at Webster Middle School. Carmen Rivera, another paraprofessional at Park Avenue. Jared Carp, an English teacher at Butler High School. And Megan McGovern, a math teacher at Webster Middle School. So we continue to advertise, they've been freshly posted, and we look to fill those positions. Next, we have a transfer, so I am happy to announce Alicia Coakley will be transferring from a preschool teacher to a kindergarten teacher at Park Ave. And then below, you'll see the list of vacant positions. We will continue to update that and keep it current as we come to school committee so you are aware of what's open out there. Are there any questions to our personnel update? Nope. Moving on. So on June 21st, the district uploaded our new instructional priority to the statewide system of support, our partners. This instructional priority was created based on data and with the collaboration of our DILT team and our SSOS partners who facilitated our instructional prioritization sessions back at the end of May. Because the district has two schools that are in need of support, we are required to do this annually. We send a report. We are awaiting their feedback to review that instructional priority and see if we need to make any adjustments. If not, I will bring it to you at our next school committee meeting for your information. On July, tomorrow, on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, we have our annual administrative retreat. During these two days, we will be taking a look at our structure for our upcoming school year. We're going to spend time reviewing our instructional priority and how it'll guide our instruction and professional development throughout the 24-25 school year. We also use this time to review our policies and expectations for the upcoming year. We also take the opportunity to have a little training during that time. We have legal coming in, who will review some discipline procedures for us. We also have our SRO coming in with the police chief to review what an SRO can do in a district. And it's an opportunity for us to ask questions and learn moving forward as a team. So we look forward to that the next couple of days. Next, we have a review of our summer programming, which started on July 8th, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mackay so she can speak about what programs we have happening over the summer.
Good evening. So this year, we're excited to continue our summer programming. We've expanded a little bit more this year. As Superintendent Prangeli said, we started yesterday on July 8th. We have summer programs at all three schools this year. Park Avenue hosts its traditional 21st Century Pass program. And that program is, also runs all year after school. It's a continuation, the summer version, of what's happening, and the focus there is really on project-based learning. It's more enrichment with a focus on academic support as well, but the majority is enrichment. Park Avenue also has its special education Extended School Year program running. And for those students that are already enrolled and already registered to attend kindergarten, they will be participating in something called Jumping into Kindergarten Program for One Week Camps. So two of our counselors are hosting that. At Webster Middle School, we have traditional summer school programming for grades five through seven, and that's for students needing academic support in summer. Webster Middle School will also host special topics camps. We're fortunate to have a continuation of that this year, each for one camp at a time. This year, the camps include video production, theater, jewelry-making, tennis, basketball, and shark tank. And one of the great connections that the teams have made there is video production and jewelry-making are directly tied to our PBIS initiative, so that we're trying to create some of the lessons, the video lessons, that students will engage with in the fall, as well as some of the reinforcement. The jewelry will be used directly tied to our PBIS programming. So that's really cool that they were able to make that connection. This year, we're doing something a little bit different for grade eight students. So grade eight students that were referred to summer school were enrolled in person at the high school. And we specifically targeted English, math, biology, and also offering an introduction to the PLTWs, the Project Based, Projectly the Way course, so that they would have a smoother transition to high school, like in the physical space, they're in the mods, actually, so they're having that transition in person. And they're getting some reinforcement in the subjects that are the traditionally, the tested subjects for MCAS in high school. I stopped by yesterday, which was the first day, and they're doing math. This group is doing math. There were 19 students that attended. We have really great teachers. They're engaged, they were participating, they were laughing, they were working. It was a different summer school experience, I think, for the academic stuff, not the enrichment things. So we're looking forward to monitoring that and actually assessing the effectiveness. I'd like to follow those students next year to see if this was actually, you know, a better, effective way of transitioning them to high school. Students that we didn't think would come showed up, and so it was really great. I would like to add that there was one student at middle school that walked on, not a student that was referred for summer school, and this student just walked in and said, "Can I come?" And the answer, of course, is yes, please. Let's do everything possible to make this student come. In addition, at the high school, we have the traditional credit recovery program happening, where students who did not meet with success during the school year are able to recover some of those credits. We engaged once again with Imagine Learning, formerly known as Edge Annuity, where there's, it's an online platform, and we have adults, we have teachers who are there to support students. We do have a couple of classes that are in person because teachers applied for those positions. We're teaching Spanish in person, and also health and PE. And so we're excited to be able to offer this, you know, varied, these varied opportunities to our students to help them be more successful and keep their brains in the game during the summer, so that when they come back, we are a little bit more ready for school.
Thank you. Any questions about summer program?
No.
Great.
Sounds great.
In addition to that, all of our summer programs offer breakfast and lunch for our students, so just so you're aware of that. And then moving on to other updates. In addition to summer program, our summer feeding program also started, which will run July 8th through August 15th at Park Avenue from 11:30 to 12:30, Monday through Fridays, and the Gladys Kelly Library from 12 to 1, Monday through Thursdays. We will also be serving at the Webster Middle School from July 8th to August 2nd from 11:30 to 12:30, Monday through Friday. I just want to let the public know that meals are free to anyone 18 and under, and if there are any adults interested, they can purchase a meal for $5. The only caveat is that meals need to be consumed on-site, as the regulations don't allow to-go meals. So we have to go, but it's great down the library. If you go, you see people sitting outside and eating. It's great, so head on down there. I'm going to skip to the end, if you're following along in my notes a little bit, just because, along with the summer program, I am excited to announce that Project Bread has been, has selected Webster as a site visit for Congressman McGovern on July 18th to come to the Webster Library. We've been fortunate to partner with the Webster Library, and they fully support our summer feeding program. We expect Congressman McGovern to be at the library around 12:15, 12:30, if anybody is interested in joining that event. So I will be away that day, but I hope somebody can take the opportunity to go down and say hi. He is a big advocate for our students in Massachusetts, making sure they receive healthy meals, so we appreciate his support and welcome him to our sites, and we thank the library for their collaboration. In addition, I am pleased to announce the award of the Capital Skills Grant. Webster will be receiving $75,000 to use for supporting our innovative career pathway programs. I'd like to thank Michelle Bigelow for her efforts in constantly looking for alternative funding to help support these programs. These programs are not cheap to run. They require a lot of upfront costs when you're starting up a program, and she works tirelessly looking for funding to support these programs. I am not going to go through the list, but much of the materials that Michelle applied for is going to expand our middle school and help our middle school programs as we're trying to create that pathway to get kids interested at an early age, to see what we have to offer at the high school. So having that involvement at the middle school is key to the success of our program. So I want to thank Michelle for that. Next week, July 16th to the 18th, is the superintendent's conference, so I will be heading down the Cape. I look forward to networking with colleagues and the opportunity to attend breakout sessions and to advance my knowledge and skill set. I will report back to you on how the conference goes, but I look forward to definitely meeting and spending time with my colleagues. And as we are winding down the school year, because we're winding down one school year and opening up another school year, we are still in between FY '24 and FY '25 with many things, whether it's financials or student data. We have a lot of end-of-year reporting that goes on. This year, we received notice from DESI that at the end of the year, we always report our SIMS data and our EPUMS data, so that is student information and employee information. They collect staff data, they collect data on positions and roles, grading, all kinds of course assignments and things like that. But this year, they are also adding additional information. They've also informed us that they are taking a look, along with, as you know, there has been a big attendance push across the state for student attendance. They are also looking to better understand staff attendance, because that has been a problem across the state. So they are going to be running some additional reports and analyzing that data so they can help to develop policies and supportive improved student outcomes. As we know, attendance, like anything, staff attendance, student attendance, they align, and it's important that both are in the classrooms. So that's an interesting dataset that we will be looking at, and I look forward to those reports coming out. And then lastly, under my other reports, on Monday, July 8th, Dr. Mackay, Lisa Kontos, and I participated in a meeting with the Federal Office of Oversight for SR2 liquidation. As you know, we received a lot of federal funds over the past few years, and some of those federal funds were used for the purchase of our two mini buses that we have, our student buses out front. When we say late liquidation, the SR2 grant ended in September, and we did not receive the buses until after the fact. So we had to fill out special forms to request from the government that we could have extra time to spend the money, because the buses weren't ready. There was a manufacturing delay, and they understood that across the nation. There was a manufacturing delay. So there were only two reasons why you could extend, and that was one of them. But Webster was one of the lucky Massachusetts participants who got audited for that. So go Webster! But I am really proud and happy to say that they were quite impressed with the data. We were lucky, we were fortunate, it was only the buses that we extended, but the oversight and the data keeping by Dr. Mackay is really critical to the success. We ended up submitting data into the federal government for that. They returned questions, asked some questions. We sent more detail. They had a two-hour call scheduled with us for Monday. I think we spent 30 minutes, maybe? Huh? 12 minutes, maybe? Okay, I stretched the truth of my fish story. We spent about 12 minutes on the phone, and the first words out of their mouth were, you know, "We can't thank you enough for the extensive information that you've sent us. You've answered a lot of our questions ahead of time." Really, you know, what we determined is that it's not so much they were auditing Webster, but they were looking at the communication between Webster and the state, and how the funds are being spent, and is there clear communication between the two, so we know what's going on. But we were happy with that. It was a great audit, and we don't expect any further information from that. So congratulations to Dr. Mackay and Lisa. I don't think there was a clear understanding from a lot of people. The additional money was wonderful, and we put it to good use, but it was a lot of work, and there was a lot of oversight and compliance that went along with the funds. So thank you for your work on that. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me that I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Who's the champ?
Mallett?
I would just like to extend my kudos to Ms. Bigelow for her tireless dedication to bringing programs and funding for these exceptional educational opportunities for our students. It's just amazing what she does, and they are really, really benefiting from them.
Absolutely. And the extension to the middle school and the partnership that they've had, Ms. Peterson and Mr. Collins working together to expand and to really provide a teaming between the two buildings and the students going over, helping the middle school students. The middle school students can see what the high school kids are doing. I'm hoping that, you know, it really helps expand our programs, and it's giving the kids a great skill set that they can have when they go out if they choose to not go on to college, so. Please.
I think it's important, Ms. Mallett, to say that the teachers that she works with have also hopped on board for a successful platform and a rollout. Each thing that she gives them, there's no pushback, there's nothing negative, they just embrace it, and they bring it into the lives of our kids. So I think it's a collective effort, and she would want me to say that publicly, and I think it's so important, because those teachers work really hard as well in these new initiatives, and that's what our kids, so I just want to say that, if I can add into what you said.
I agree with you, because I know someone involved in the program, and she's so, so very excited.
They're amazing. As a team, they're great.
Ms. Bigelow has not just excited the students, but staff.
She's a great leader, and they're great teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Mrs. Prangeli? Next item on the agenda is the business manager's report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, everyone. Happy July. I've been waiting for the summer, and now it's so warm, I'm not sure, I'm loving it. All right, let's jump into the renovation project that's going on. First item to report to you is that we are extending the end date for Phase One. Phase One, which is Section C, was scheduled to be completed so that we would do our transition during February vacation. That has now been extended to April vacation, so April 2025. The reason for the extension has been challenges with getting the power infrastructure set up. So there's been some challenges with getting the switchgear, as well as what we need to do with some constraints with National Grid about the duration of time that we can run power into this building concurrently. Right now, the electrical panel is in this section of the building that we're in, and the new hookup will be in C-section. So due to those factors, we have concluded that we'd be moving that out. On the flip side of that, the good news is it's not changing any of the end dates on the other phases, and it's not impacting cost. So we've worked very closely with brake contractors, as well as the designers, and this is the best outcome for us, to be able to manage those constraints that we're facing with respect to the power. Some other activities going on. We are happy to report that footings, piers, foundation walls are all in place for the auditorium, the future loading dock, as well as the outdoor classroom, which is on the other side of the building, where the cafeteria will be. Lots of activity has been going on, continuing to go on with respect to the basement drainage. Previously reported that that's where all our mechanical equipment will be in the future, our boiler and all of that equipment, so a lot of focus has been on the drainage down there. As a result of a visit from the town building inspector, a change was requested in that design, and so what he's asked to have happen is that the new perforated drain that we're using, that elevation had to be changed and lowered so that it is below the plumbing to avoid any future issues with respect to the drainage in that area. The last step after that's completed will be a geotech engineer will come out, will evaluate and test the site for drainage, and that will determine the size of the pump that we're going to need going forward. So those activities are underway. Lastly, you may have noticed, if you've come through the campus, that the fencing has extended out beyond the gymnasium. So that has extended out so that some additional sewer lines could be installed, and so as a result, during summer school, the traffic is being detoured into the Webster Middle School bus loop. Those are really some of the highlights going on right now. I'll continue to keep you posted as activity continues to progress. Any questions on the renovation project? Okay. All right. No maintenance updates this time, so I'm going to jump into the end-of-year audit. So our auditors recently completed the fiscal year '23 end-of-year report audit. They presented those results to us at the end of May, and there were two findings related to Schedule One. So Schedule One deals with all of our revenue and expenditures that are spent by the town and the school, and when I say the town, it's town shared costs of supporting the school. We did include a copy of that audit letter in your packet. One of the first findings was related to a late change in revenue by DESI after the end-of-year report audits were, I mean, end-of-year report was filed. The other was a reduction that we had to make in a rental and leasing line item that we discovered as a result of working with them on the audit, and we actually corrected that before the audit was completed. So all in all, it was a very successful outcome. I really can't take any credit for that, because the superintendent actually completed the end-of-year report when I first started, but I'm very anxious to do the first one myself, and I'm saying anxious because it's a lot of work. I watched the work effort that she put into this and really am amazed that only two findings came out. Any questions?
No questions for me. Any questions from the committee? Thank you for your updates. The next item on the agenda under Old Business is a monthly report on fundraising applications. As a reminder, it's the role of the school committee to review fundraising activities, but we don't approve them. Those are done at the building level. There's a number of fundraising activities that are happening in here related to the Gridiron Club, varsity softball and baseball teams, and the list goes on. Are there any questions or comments from the committee with regard to these fundraising activities? And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation. So one of the unique parts of being a school superintendent, among many of the other interesting things, is being evaluated in public. Now, I can safely say that I have never been evaluated in public, nor have many of us, but it's something that is a reality for school superintendents around the state, and it's also a good reminder, I believe, of the role of the school committee. So, you know, we talk about a lot of things during the course of our meetings. Really, we have three roles, three functions as a committee, and that is to set policy, approve budget, and to hire and evaluate the superintendent. So tonight, we're going to carry out one of those major responsibilities, and it's something that I think, as a committee, we took pretty seriously, and there's a lot of information included in the document. I'm not going to read every line of the document, but I will review some of the highlights and some of the comments that were made by committee members. Does that sound okay? Great. So this is Mrs. Prangeli's first evaluation as a superintendent, being her first full year as a superintendent. There are, first of all, step one is to assess progress toward goals, and there are three categories for goals: professional practice goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals. So that first category for professional practice, two members rated Mrs. Prangeli as having met those goals, and two rated her as having exceeded those goals. The next item under student learning goals, all four members that evaluated Mrs. Prangeli rated her as having met those goals. And for district improvement goals, two members rated her as having met her goals, and two rated her as having exceeded. And for those of you who may be wondering why there's five of us sitting here and four people evaluating, Members Greglia is brand-new to the committee and hasn't had an opportunity to observe Mrs. Prangeli during the course of this year. So next year, God willing, all five of us will have a chance to be able to evaluate. So, so far, after step one, we move into step two, which is assessing the superintendent's performance on standards. So there are four standards. Standard one is instructional leadership. In that category, three members rated Mrs. Prangeli as proficient and one as exemplary. Standard two, management and operations, we had one member rate Mrs. Prangeli proficient, and three rate her as exemplary. Under family and community engagement, two members rated Mrs. Prangeli proficient, and two rated her as exemplary. And under professional culture, we had two members rate Mrs. Prangeli as proficient and two as exemplary. Being that those are the only two categories that were used, I'll explain what those two mean. I'm not going to describe the others. But proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory, and this is the rigorous expected level of performance for school superintendents. Exemplary is a rating that indicates that the practice significantly exceeds proficient and could serve as a model of practice regionally or statewide. So kudos to you, Mrs. Prangeli, on those ratings. Now, moving into really the meat of the evaluation, I won't go into all of it, but what I did do is highlight some of the comments that were made by committee members, just to highlight them, because, well, quite honestly, I think all of us put a lot of time and effort into giving you that feedback, and I know that you've had a chance to read it. Some things that stood out are some comments, in no particular order, and this is basically on that first section, are that Mrs. Prangeli has had a very productive first year, that her overall leadership has been marked by strategic vision, collaborative approach, and unwavering commitment to the district's mission and goals. Her ability to navigate complex challenges, engage with stakeholders, and to drive meaningful improvements has been commendable. Her focus on student achievement, staff development, operational efficiency, and community engagement has laid a strong foundation for continued success. Let's see here, trying to think of where I want to go next. That concludes sort of the top part of the evaluation, and then from there, we really move into some more specific things. I don't know that I need to unpack all of this, do you think?
No, I don't think so.
I'll share a couple of other, so basically, the rest of the evaluation tucks into the top part that I've just explained, so I'm not going to review every single rating. We'll be here for a very long time. But what I will do, I did highlight some of the feedback that members provided for those other sections. Not all of it, because again, I want to be respectful of everyone's time, but I will, I'll unpack a little bit of that feedback. Let's see here. The introduction of new curricular resources and teaching methodologies has been particularly noteworthy. This is under the instructional leadership section, and that it's been reflecting a forward-thinking approach to education. And that it's been reflecting a forward-thinking approach to education, and the utilization of performance data and creating student focus groups has enabled the superintendent to identify areas of need and implement targeted interventions. The superintendent has brought the district and building administrators together as a cohesive team who share a vision of continuous improvement, student achievement, and cross-school collaboration. The use of data to inform decision-making and the commitment to positive and growth-oriented feedback is appreciated. Now, there was a note here that a member would like Mrs. Perangeli to continue to model and set high expectations for the content and quality of instruction and student work at the district level, and to regularly provide feedback and ensure that principals are identifying and promoting inclusive teaching practices that will meet the needs of all students. I'm going to keep going, if that's okay? Management and operations, any comments so far? So under this section, some noteworthy comments included that Mrs. Perangeli listens to relevant parties prior to providing school committee recommendations. That she has demonstrated exemplary leadership and operational management, ensuring the smooth functioning and continuous improvement of our district's infrastructure and processes, both with the school budget as well as overseeing the high school renovation. And another member noted that management and operations is an area of particularly, a particular strength for Mrs. Perangeli. The next area, family and community engagement. One member noted that Mrs. Perangeli continues to identify new means to address families and continues to work diligently to engage students and families with the students' education and the public schools as a whole. That Mrs. Perangeli has worked tirelessly with our family engagement coordinator, which has significantly enhanced our district's ability to connect with and support our families. Families are beginning to feel like the district is meeting them where they're at. This role has been pivotal in driving various family engagement initiatives and ensuring their successful implementation. Another member noted that concerted efforts at ongoing two-way communication at the classroom, grade level, school, and district level are a key component to family engagement in creating a sense of belonging and ownership of student outcomes for families and community members alike. Uniform standards for communication from teachers and staff to families, highlighting learning objectives or topics in the classroom and accomplishments or outcomes at the end of a specified period, will augment existing efforts. Events, while beneficial, are only part of the formula. Regular, ongoing, two-way communication is a necessary component, an often underutilized strategy to engage families in their students' learning. Staff and families and students have attended school committee meetings at a rate I have not seen in my seven years on the committee. The next area is professional culture. And some of the comments that include, let's see here, morale within the district appearing to be approving in a positive way. Administrators are provided with the power to manage their school while focusing on overall goals at the district level. And that Mrs. Perangeli has a reputation as a principled and fair leader that inspires those around her to perform at high levels of professionalism, cultural proficiency, and maintaining a shared vision of success. It's tough to be evaluated in public. Those are some of the highlights that I, you know, wanted to make sure that we talked about as a group. Does anyone else have anything that they want to add or any comments that maybe were not highlighted that we should bring up here? Ms. Bligh.
So I just wanted to say, and I know I laid out a lot of comments, I included a lot of comments, but just to see you grow, I've been on the committee, I believe this is my seventh year, and to see you grow from business manager, assistant superintendent, now to superintendent, it's, it's just, it fills my heart to see how you approach everything and everybody. You know, what you see is what you get with you, and I think everybody would agree with that. I am lucky enough to be on the building committee as well, so I've been able to work with you then, during those meetings and during our design meetings, and just every interaction with you has been great. And, you know, and if we don't, if we don't agree, then we talk about it. But you always approach things as a lady and very professional, so I just wanted to kind of share that publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bligh. Any other comments from the committee? Mrs. Perangeli, do you have anything that you wanted to say about this evaluation?
I do. It's awkward.
It is.
It's really awkward. But I appreciate and I take the feedback to heart. I mean, it's been a year. We have a lot of work to do, and the work that this team has done is second to none. They have been, they are critical to this success because it is every meeting in this room, every event that they are at, it's not just me at functions, it's not just me. This is a collaborative effort, and I am really proud of the work that this team has accomplished and that it's seen here because they deserve a lot of the credit. And I also want to thank our staff and our teachers and our families. We can, we continue to work to partner with our families and bring them in and welcome them in and be at the table with us because that's how we're going to grow and be better as a district. That's how we're going to show our gains, is when we're sitting down, working together. And I believe this team can do it, and I look forward to it. We have, we have a long way to go. You know, this work is just the beginning, just the beginning. And I, we will do more. I believe we can do more, and our families deserve more. So thank you for this. I thank my team for all their efforts. I thank the staff for their efforts, and I thank you for your support. It's easy to come to a meeting where you feel supported and valued and listened to and heard, and I feel like you do that, and, and always willing to just, if, we're going to have differences of opinions and different views, but if we can sit down and talk to them and tackle them in a collaborative way, we can, we can fly. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. And I agree, and I think it goes both ways, that feeling of honest communication and feedback sharing and collaboration is appreciated.
Thank you. And thank you. Thank you, all of you.
This is a very good evaluation for a first-year superintendent.
Still awkward.
Something to be proud of. And I understand, you know, no one can whistle a symphony, as they say, right? I know you have other folks that are part of your team that are helping contribute to the success, but congratulations on a successful first year.
Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of a new Open SciEd science curriculum for Bartlett High School.
All right. Let me refocus.
So I'm going to be presenting the Open SciEd curriculum review process very briefly. I had previously gone over the curriculum review process for Eureka before, so I'll go over you with the whole process all over again. So if you go on to the next slide.
Oh, sorry, Deb.
That's okay. No problem. So this is basically the roadmap that we actually used in order to go through the process or the mass, implement mass process through the Department of Education, where we actually went through the process of reviewing the current curriculum that we were using for science, in particular biology. During, during the course of the beginning of the last academic year or school year, the team reviewed and also did research and analyzed different curriculum for biology and also the current curriculum for biology as well, which was the Miller-Levine. Based on that research and analysis and also looking at the ed reports from the Department of Education, CURATE, so on and so forth, and all of that data, they were able to narrow down the two choices of biology curriculum for Open SciEd and then also for BSCS. So these are the three choices that, and we also had the Miller-Levine biology curriculum, which were, which was basically the one that was currently being used. However, the Miller-Levine biology curriculum did not meet the Department of Education high-quality instructional materials, so we had to, we decided not to pilot the Miller-Levine curriculum because of that reason. So as part of the, again, a review of the curriculum, we went through all the phases, which I'm not going to get into it. And then eventually, we did the pilot for the BSCS biology curriculum with all biology classrooms, and then also the Open SciEd curriculum pilot as well. As a result of the pilot, we gathered data, again, from not only the teachers, from also the students, and also during our implement mass meetings, we had a discussion about the feedback, what we're missing, what else do we need to look at in order to make an informed decision on the final. So this is just basically some of the survey feedback that we received. And then BSCS is on the left, Open SciEd is on the right side. And then, so I'm not going to get into all of that, but it provides you with a quick visual of the differences in terms of the feedback that we received from the teams. And then after looking at all the data, we were able to make the determination that Open SciEd had the highest rating based on not only the ed reports, but also the feedback that we received as well. One of the things that I do want to say that it was a little bit challenging, and Mr. Collins can actually attest to that, where, you know, we are going through a change in what curriculum implementation means and how, and what is it exactly that we want students to be able to do, and how do we want them to lead their own instruction. So it is a big shift, not only for Webster Public Schools, but for a lot of the school districts that are also implementing Open SciEd, where this is all student-centered instruction, where students are leading their own growth and learning. And for that reason, you know, it was a little bit challenging, I do have to say, you know, to, how do we support and train staff to change the mentality in terms of this is how we want to teach now? It's a completely 360 from what traditionally curriculum instruction and lesson, you know, instruction has been done in the past. So we are still in the process of providing additional training to all staff. We did have several training sessions already on Open SciEd, and that is just the beginning of it. Along with the purchase of the curriculum, we're also going to be adding additional training sessions throughout the course of the year in order to continue analyzing and implementing the curriculum and also ensuring that we are meeting all students and that we are staying true to the DESI and our priority to support all students. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Mellett?
Would there be maybe some opportunities for teachers to visit a school that already uses this to see the instruction firsthand?
We actually had contacted one of the schools that had already implemented Open SciEd to have the coach and have a couple of people go visit. It was not possible because it was, when we finished the pilot, it was towards the end. We actually finished it in June, and then they had two full days training after that with an actual teacher who has implemented the curriculum. But that doesn't mean that we can move forward and find that opportunity for teachers to go in and observe other district. There are a lot of districts in Massachusetts that have already implemented Open SciEd or that will be implementing the Open SciEd, even if we can find the opportunity for teachers to collaborate or attend other meetings where teachers are also implementing the curriculum. I think that would be a great opportunity for them to share, you know, ideas, share concerns, share solutions, and collaborate as well. But absolutely.
Yes, go ahead.
Taunton Public Schools reached out to us because that's the school that we were able to connect to, Ms. Rivera and myself, at the Boston College seminar that hosted Open SciEd for us. They reached out at the end of the year to one of the teachers because we had given their number to him, and in his end-of-year evaluation meeting, he did comment that they would like to go. So the teachers are on board to go. Hopefully, with the coaching cycle here and the support of our, our curriculum office, but also our coach in the building, that we will be able to take a team there within that first quarter as they unpack, because they are going to do a full pilot versus just selected lessons, so that'll be a whole new learning curve. So it'll be nice to be able to make that connection. The people were great to us, and I know they'll be great to our staff if they get to go as well.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments?
It's exciting to see a new curriculum coming our way. Hopefully, this is going to help us with our outcomes for biology scores at Bartlett. You know, I know that's something that we've had our eye on for a bit, so it's great to see progress in that direction. Any other comments from the committee? All right.
Can we have a motion to approve?
Yep. So hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the new Open SciEd science curriculum for Bartlett High School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you to all of you and the whole team that piloted that, both of the programs and for the thoughtful decision-making process. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of surplus items, and that would be the Bartlett High School Miller-Levine science textbooks and manuals. So in our packet, there's a list of all of the materials that are going to be declared surplus. Are there any questions or comments about that? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to declare surplus items of miscellaneous Miller-Levine science textbooks and manuals from Webster Middle School, from, excuse me, Webster Public Schools, and to direct the superintendent or business manager to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle or dispose of these materials in conjunction with the provisions for Mass General Law 30B.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of changes to the substitute handbook. Ms. Perangeli?
Yep. So in this one, we have a few minor changes also. We changed the name on page one to reflect Desiree Moniz. We updated names on page three. We needed to add gender identity to our non-discrimination language, so update that to make it consistent with everything else. We did increase the sub-nurse rate to try and keep competitive with our neighboring districts from 160 to 175. As you know, it's very difficult to get sub-nurses in the district. And on page six, we changed, name changed to reflect the appropriate staff who's doing the job. because that speeds up the hiring process for us because that was kind of a roadblock for us at times that kept us waiting. And then on page 10, we did a change of address, and we changed the name. Not too many changes in that handbook, so I look for your approval.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the updates to the Employee Handbook? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of changes to the Substitute Handbook.
Yep. So in this one, we have a few minor changes also. We changed the name on page one to reflect Desiree Moniz. We updated names on page three. We needed to add gender identity to our nondiscrimination language, so update that to make it consistent with everything else. We did increase the subnurse rate to try and keep competitive with our neighboring districts from 160 to 175. As you know, it's very difficult to get subnurses in the district. And on page six, we changed, name changed to reflect the appropriate staff who's doing the job now. And that's it for the sub handbook.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Substitute Handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please, excuse me, Desiree, would you please poll the committee? I knew what was going to happen at one point.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Bartlett High School Student Handbook.
Member Collins?
Good evening.
Mr. Collins?
Hi. So you will see the changes are updated in your handout this evening. There are a couple that I will call attention to, and we can go from there if there are questions. The biggest one is going to be the grading system and policy, which was something I reported on previously to you that this was through Teacher Voice and Teacher-led Committee in our building without administrator presence until after it was approved. And we did align all of the policies within the handbook to the other schools. So you will see that the language is now changed and updated to reflect the same consistency across the board as that was the feedback from last year in this area. So it is about a page and a half of changes, but very, very minimal changes. That is going to be the largest one, but that was previously approved, of course, in our program of studies.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Bartlett High School Student Handbook.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of the Webster Middle School Student Handbook. Mrs. Peterson?
Good evening, everybody. Following in line with Mr. Collins, we don't have a lot of changes. Again, you have the cover page indicating the changes in red in the handbook. Some editing, punctuation, et cetera, which changes our table of contents. And again, the big things, like Mr. Collins, were the attendance policies and the suspension law updates, which are in line with all three schools.
Any questions or comments?
Through the chair. I just want to call out on page two of that. I'm not in there under the school committee. It still has Kathleen Napparada as vice chair. So I just...
We love a Miss Kathleen Napparada, but she's no longer with us.
So I just want to call that out.
The backside of the cover page, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah. I think so, yes.
We will change that.
Thank you.
Apologies. I'm not sure why Kathleen's name is in red because it's not...
I tried everything before, so.
Thank you for that, Ms. Blythe. Any other questions or comments from the committee with regard to the Webster Middle School Student Handbook? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of the Park Avenue Elementary School Student Handbook. Good evening, Ms. Caliafico.
Hello, good evening. And your comment, Member Blythe, made me question whether we even have school committee listed in our handbook, which I don't think we do. So that is a change that is not yet there, but we will add our school committee in. So our changes, most of ours were done in April. Many of the ones that the middle school and high school mentioned as a result of the DESI audit, we did those in April. Some of the new changes that we did make are embedding the policies throughout the handbook. We used to have them at the end of the handbook as the Webster Public School policies. In order to match the high school and middle school, we embedded them within. So the Webster policy on bullying is where we talk about bullying, et cetera. We also added the school calendar. And most of our beginning pages, we made year updates, our known staffing updates, and our grading calendar. So much of our changes that happened between April and now are more based in staffing changes and date changes.
Thank you, Ms. Caliafico. Any questions or comments from the committee?
To the chair.
To Adamopoulos.
On page seven, on important dates, I think we just have to update December 2nd to say Labor Day.
Okay.
Wrong holidays listed.
Oh, yep.
Good catch. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Park Avenue Elementary School Student Handbook.
I'm sorry, I just have, sorry. I just have one other item. Sorry, I wasn't quick enough. Under the same, page seven, added, it looks like Good Friday is listed twice.
Yes, I just deleted it.
Oh, okay.
We were just going down there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other late feedback coming in?
It's a lot.
Coming in hot.
You can look at these many, many times.
And yeah, see something different each time.
Yep.
All right. Well, hearing no additional feedback, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Park Ave Elementary School Student Handbook with the minor adjustments that we've noted as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of the Coaching Handbook.
Do that, you want me to grab it? I can take it. I'll take it. I know. We added discrimination language and mission statements. On page nine, there was some grade change, from passing grade from a 65 to a 60. We removed, I'm happy to say, we removed the CDC COVID information. I'm happy we can put that behind us. And we updated all the, removed, I should say, not updated, removed the COVID information from the athletic participation forms also. So I am pleased about those changes.
Great. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Coaching Handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a fundraising organization, the Gridiron Club.
Yep, in your packet, the school committee needs to approve fundraising organizations. In the packet, you have one from the Gridiron Club, who is looking to do some fundraising for the school year coming up, 24, 25 school year. They are a 501(c)(3), and it needs school committee approval.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? No, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Gridiron Club as a fundraising organization.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a number of donations. I'll list all of them individually and give an opportunity for questions or comments, and then we'll take it as one motion, unless anyone has an opposition to that as we get into it. So there's a number of donations to review here. There are some miscellaneous items that were donated to the Bartlett High School Senior Class Overnight Event, a clarinet from the Savard family to Webster Middle School, a treadmill from an anonymous donor to Webster Middle School, $1,015 from Global Partners to Park Avenue Elementary School Family Engagement Program, $500 from the Special Olympics to Webster Middle School to fund the unified basketball uniforms. And that's it. Any questions or comments from anyone about those? No? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve all of those donations.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. I'd like to just take a moment to thank all of these donors and the many other folks who donate time and talent and other things to the Webster Public Schools over the course of the year. But thank you all for your generous contributions. The next item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of a 1.0 FTE ABA at Park Ave Elementary.
Thank you. So in your packet, you should have a letter from Ms. Sherry here, our Assistant Director of Student Support Services. We recently had a request for a new position at Park Ave Elementary to support the needs of students receiving special education services. So this is IEP-related, compliance-related. So it is our recommendation to approve the 1.0 FTE ABA, and we will be funding that out of Circuit Breaker. If we do have any salary savings or anything during the school year, we may be coming back and asking to take that position out of those salary savings versus Circuit Breaker. But for now, since it's so early in the year and we're just going through the summer and the hiring months, we're going to stick with the Circuit Breaker for now.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve a 1.0 FTE ABA for Park Ave Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of a job description for an Assistant Superintendent for Federal Programs and Data. Mrs. Prangeli?
Thank you. So I am looking to reclass this position. This was the previous Director of Title I, L. Grants Management, MCAS Coordinator, Mentoring, and Before and After School Programming. That was the title of the previous position. That was a mouthful. So I am looking to reclass that position as an Assistant Superintendent for Federal Programs and Data. As you know, Dr. Mackay has been in the district for a very long time. She has been a member of the Central Office Team for quite some time now, since 2018, maybe. So her contract is up at the end of June, at the end of June. And I am looking to reclass her position to come in alignment with the needs of the district and the central office. What I'm really hoping, that it provides a clear understanding. So when I'm out, Dr. Mackay would be responsible and in charge. She understands the ongoing of the district. And we have seen over the past few years a lot of compliance changing with grants and oversight. So this position will be taking a look at all federal grants and not just looking at the compliance as far as are we meeting the needs of what the grants are, but the compliance of our school and district needs and plans. With these grants come a lot of plans that we need to submit to the Department of Education and that compliance in the structure to make sure that we're all paddling in the right direction. We all know what we're working towards in putting those systems and structures in place that we started this year, working so very hard to do, making sure that we have alignment through everything. We have a strategic plan. We have a Student Opportunity Act. We have instructional priority. We have reports that we submit for Title I and TAG. And are we rowing in the same direction? And do we even know where those plans align to? So making sure that we have that support system in place and that we have eyes on that at all time and they're in alignment. So I think Dr. Mackay is certainly capable and more than capable, and this plays to her strengths. So I would be looking for school committee's approval of this position. And I think the district is very wise to move Dr. Mackay forward to Assistant Superintendent, and I fully support that.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
To the chair. How is this position funded? Is it the same way we...
Yep.
Okay, all right. I just know there's just been so much budget talk. I just wanted to ask the question and make sure...
She would still have the same job duties. Well, she would have more job duties, of course. But it is funded in the same manner as it's always been.
Thank you. That's what I figured, but thank you.
It's a good question, you know. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the job description for the Assistant Superintendent for Federal Programs and Data as presented and allow Mrs. Prangeli to negotiate a contract with Dr. Mackay.
Thanks. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Dr. Mackay, thank you for all of the work that you've done to this point. I'm surprised you don't have a lot bigger nameplate with all of those titles. There's only two things on there, but I heard about eight. So it's good to hear that you're going to have a, it sounds like a bigger job, but a smaller title. Looking forward to our relationship evolving in the future. So thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
And thank you for your support.
Yep, keeping your eye on the ongoing needs, I think, of the district. So much appreciated there. And then the next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. Real quick, before we get our signing hands ready, we do have a transfer request in the amount of $18,138.23 from the Bartlett High School Student Activity Savings Account to the checking account. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Journey further discussion? Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Desiree, I think that was a record for polls in one meeting.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.